Hello again, everyone. Lovely to see so many of you here this evening. I'm going to do some housekeeping first, which is the usual format, and then I'll give you some information about this evening. But what we want to do is to keep this light and informal as much as possible, but obviously we have to follow certain parts of the evening. But please help yourself to refreshments, tea and coffee and water in the corner and some food at the end of the corridor there during the meeting if you so wish. Thank you. Okay, so this is the annual meeting for Froome residents that Froome Town Council organizes on your behalf. And as your mayor, it's my honour to be chairing the meeting this evening. For those in the room, the little housekeeping as usual. The emergency exit is in the rear corner of the room and the assembly point is afar side of the car park. Toilets at the end of the corridor turn right and there is an accessible toilet to the right of the lift, just outside the door here. Paul Wynn, town clerk, is here to provide any advice and Sarah, Laura and Becky will manage the questions board, participating settings and the IT generally. We always try to make the meetings as accessible and inclusive as possible, so the meeting will be recorded and we are live streaming to our YouTube channel. For those attending via Zoom, please use the yellow hand and for everyone else, ask questions through the Q&amp;A board. Obviously, if you're in the room, raise your hand. So just to point out before we actually start the agenda that this is not a council meeting in the normal sense, but it is effectively yours, the residents of Froome. It's your annual town meeting, so things will be slightly different. But hopefully we'll be able to get through and enjoy the evening. Tonight's agenda will be, just so that you're informed, welcome from myself as mayor, I think I've done that bit, agree the minutes of the last meeting. Then there'll be a short presentation of my year as mayor, questions and comments from the public and councillors. You'll have an opportunity there to ask questions. And then the lightning talks, what's your big idea for Froome? Those lightning talks, we have six this evening, three minutes each. I have someone at the back of the room that has two signs, which will now be shown to you all. One says, no, the first one says 30 seconds and the last one says times up. Oh, that's the one you're showing, yeah. And thank you. And we would respectfully ask you to keep to the three minutes because we will stop you at three minutes if we may because we want to make sure that we have everyone in to complete their big idea. And in case I forget, just outside the doors there, you'll see three boards. On those boards, you'll have the heading of each of the big ideas with some post-it notes. If you wish to then leave any contact details to pass on to those particular people who've made their presentations, please do. But hopefully, once we get to the end of the evening, there'll be an opportunity to enjoy more of the food and drink and for you to then have conversations with those particular people. We want to encourage that this evening, for you to be able to talk to people while they're here in the town hall. And then there will be a video compilation celebrating FTC grant recipients for 2023-24 and a presentation of the mayor's civic awards to finish off the evening before we finish off the wine and the Italian biscotti. Okay, thank you all very much. My first duty is to agree the minutes of the last meeting of the 5th of April 2023, which I have here. Does anybody please propose that we accept those minutes? Mark Dorrington, Seconded Andy Jones, all those, please vote.
You don't have to be a councillor to approve the minutes.
It's not a council meeting.
I think that's a majority. Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, I'll ask Laura now, please, if I may have the PowerPoint presentation. Everybody goes, hmm, I know, but a very short PowerPoint presentation. And I have...
I'm told I have control. May the 15th, 16th last year was when I... Oh, we've jumped a slide. Can we go back one, please? That's me. There we are. Where I had to basically, it wasn't shown in any photographs or in any videos, where I had to wrestle Sarah for the chain. She has said on many, many occasions, it was an absolutely brilliant year. She really enjoyed it and gave it up reluctantly. Reluctantly in the sense of that she enjoyed all of the events that she went to as mayor and having to meet so many different people and so on. And she added a lot of glitter, I think, to the mayor's role. And I put that there and there will be another reference later on. But to say a huge thank you to Sarah, I learnt so much in the first year, being new as a councillor and a deputy mayor in my first year. But having Sarah, as I call her M, as the mayor and as a lead and as a guide, was absolutely fantastic, a unique opportunity for me. We used to meet regularly, usually at the cheese and grain over a pint and discuss various things and some events we went to together. It was absolutely brilliant, so thank you, Sarah, for that introduction and support. So start of the year as mayor. I really didn't have much of an idea of how amazing it was going to be. You think you know the town that you live in. We came here in 1986 and you engage with a lot of people in lots and lots of different ways. We started the first cafe at the Black Swan, so we got to meet a lot of people through that particular cafe. And it's not until you actually engage with all these amazing organisations, some of which we have in this room tonight, that you realise how much is actually going on in your own community. And there, on these slides that you're going to see, about four or five of them, it's just really a cross-section. I did the sort of nerdy thing and tried to count up how many posts I'd put on Facebook. It's in excess of about 1,600, about 1,600. So I couldn't possibly put all of them up, but just a few samples there. Things like, you know, supporting Y. I did quite a bit of baking for them when they had the pop-up cafe at Rook Lane. That was really, really pleasing to do that and spend a bit of time there and do a bit of volunteering. The top picture on the right was, I didn't know I was going to meet an ex-world boxing heavyweight champion. You can see my stance, will probably mean I get knocked out in the first three seconds. But, you know, and the girl on the, to my right there, as you look at it, Lily, she actually is a South West boxing champion and the boxing club do lots and lots of amazing things. You can see there other pictures. Josh from Froome College, he's done amazing things with music and performing arts at Froome College and his partner who's at Salwar doing a similar thing there. I got to play an Indian drum at the multicultural event. It was absolutely fantastic. It's one of my favourite events. They're all my favourite events, obviously, but that was one of my favourite events. And the carnival there, getting to dress up and wander around. And the strange look at the bottom there is Ollie. Some of you might know Ollie as a barista in town. He's now at the River House, Black Swan. And I taught Ollie two years German at King Down. And so when I see him, he always says, "Guten Tag, mein Herr", but I'm more interested in his coffee. And we were very lucky, what was then the active in touch cafe, to have a barista session with him, which is a great day. Other organisations there, Lenke, you're in a slide, look. Mark's just nudged her. This is just literally a sample, a sample of some of the organisations in Froome. There's no favouritism here at all or anything like that. It's simply, there are so many, this is just a selection of some of those organisations that I came into contact with and the amazing work that they do in our town. Without these people, a lot of people would not get the support that they need. And without these people, there wouldn't be the drive and the enthusiasm there. And there are people there in the photographs that don't like to be mentioned. They don't like to come forward. They don't like, if I can say that, the limelight. They're the people behind it all, but I made a bit of a point of actually bringing them to the front so that they are recognised and that Froome can celebrate them and celebrate their achievements and what they do. Part of being mayor is also supporting local and independent small businesses. And there have been quite a few this year in Froome. I'm sure you recognise quite a few there. You've got Julian at the top there with his books on trees, The Lucky Chance, opening up in Froome, Johnny Shamansky, Ino Shishi, our new town crier, Martin, with his new cheese stall up at the Rye Bakery, and Sarah and Abby, I think, is it Abby or Libby, opening up the stores. So really good examples of young people, in some cases, who have grown up in Froome, stayed in Froome and are now opening businesses in Froome. And that's really great and to be encouraged. And I think they see a future in Froome, which is great. And that's going to bring some prosperity to Froome, which is needed. I had the pleasure of attending the 40-year celebration of twinning between Froome and Moorhart. That was in September. That was a real pleasure. And I don't know if any of you recognise the person here in the middle that was actually signing the charter. Humphrey's nodding, Bob Gooding. And I actually saw him not long after that. I actually bumped into him at the Froome Medical Practice and talked to him about that. So that, we hope, you know, and we know, will continue and build relationships, not just with Moorhart, but with Chateau Gontier and with Rabka. This is a highlight of some of the events, again, far too many to list here this evening, but things like the Christmas lights, absolutely amazing event in town. The pleasure of being on the balcony and, as I think it was Anita said, she said, "You'll get to go up onto the balcony and emcee the evening and it would just be absolutely fantastic." And it was, it's something that will obviously stay in the memory. And a little notice there from St Louis School, who came up and helped me turn the lights on. And then things like Remembrance Sunday with Colin Asbury before he retired and left. And the group picture in the middle there, that's an event that took place here, celebrating volunteers in Froome. A great afternoon with so many people doing so much amazing work in town. Another highlight for me were the Olga and Olga at the bottom there, who sang in Ukrainian at the Christmas lights. I was asked if I wanted anything and I just said, "Yeah, a song would be great." And I actually approached Irina, who works here at the town hall, and said, "Would her daughter come and do a song for us?" And she said, "Yes, but she'll bring a friend." And they actually did that together and it was absolutely amazing, very emotional, stunning. Buses, can't go, you know, too long without mentioning buses. And you get to wear those big foam hands. I had the pleasure of, I have had the pleasure of working with Peter, Peter Travis, who's here this evening and doing a lot to promote buses in town. We have an announcement to make in that there's a new bus service. We can say that, can't we, Peter? A new bus service from Froome direct to Salisbury. Ooh, yeah. I can't go, ooh, choo-choo, I don't know what noise a bus makes. The wheels go around apparently, is that it will go via Wominsta, take about an hour 20 minutes. And those of you, I don't have one, of course, but those of you with bus passes might want to take up that option. But that's great that we've got Somerset Bus Partnership and Favberg supporting buses in Froome, which is vital and really important. Civic awards and mayor's commendations. The reason I put civic awards is that we've already given one in my mayoral year and that was Mike Bishop at the top there, our ex-town crier, who retired and we decided that we would present it on the date of his retirement. So that's one civic award that we've already given and a few more this evening. And the others are mayor's commendations. I was asked by Laura and Paul the morning after I was elected, said, "Is there anything you want?" And the first thing actually said was, "A car parking space, please." This is very difficult and expensive to park around here. The answer, I can't repeat, but essentially was no. And when I went to Lyme Regis, I found that the mayor does actually have their own car park space and it says "for mayor", but it's a bit far to walk, even though I love Lyme Regis. But there's just a flavour there, but I just want to highlight one of those. And this is this gentleman here, some of you may know him, Chris Riddick. Chris Riddick is one of the security guards in the precinct and I became aware of an incident that had happened in the precinct via social media, that he had actually helped a person in distress, sat them down, stayed with them for almost half an hour while his carer was called and came to help him and take him home. And Chris Riddick went way above and beyond what might be expected in that situation. So I think three or four days later, I went down and presented him with a commendation. This is Froome. A lot of you have heard me say this before. I think we are very lucky, I think we're very privileged. I'm very proud to live in Froome. I'm very proud to have been mayor for the past year. And I think we have a lot of challenges, definitely, but I think also we have a lot to celebrate and I think we have a lot of good things to come. And I think as a community, that's our strength. I had to put this up, I'm sorry. I had to put this up. You don't know at the start of the year who you're going to meet. I said about all those amazing people in amazing organisations, but to actually meet and spend five, 10 minutes chatting to Ken Loach, I have to say thank you to Alison, you know, for organising this and however she managed to do it. What an amazing guy, absolutely amazing guy and a fantastic evening up at the football club. The reason I put that slide, and there's only one more after this. The reason I put that slide up there is not particularly to focus on the Ukrainians, it's to focus on the help that Froome has given refugees and displaced people. This was at the anniversary or the marking of the second year of the start of the conflict in Ukraine. And what was very sobering about this was that talking to them as a group, that things like their dreams, their ambitions, their futures have just been taken from them and they don't know when and if they will ever be able to re-engage with that in their country. They expressed so much gratitude to Froome and the people of Froome and their hosts and Froome Town Council, the community of Froome. Froome welcomes refugees. It was a very, very emotional evening at Boars Cross. But I just mentioned that to say, this is Froome, it's just amazing. And last of all, I wanted some music to this, which was going to be The Chain Gang. But apparently, unless you want to hum it along, but apparently because of copyright issues and so on and so on, it would get taken down if we put it up on the video. But I said I'd mention Sarah again, a big thank you to Sarah. I know she's not here this evening, but a big thank you to Sarah for her support. And a big thank you to Andy Jones, DEP, who has been absolutely amazing. Andy and I get on really well, not quite yin and yang, but I think what I really like and respect about Andy is that he's solid. He's a bit like a rock and I can talk to him about anything. We've exchanged some views and ideas and his support has been absolutely invaluable this year. And without preempting anything, I think he's going to be absolutely amazing as a mayor, but who knows? We don't know yet. And yeah, we're all wearing a chain, even Sarah's got a chain on there. So I'm just going to finish off and say, thank you all very much. It's still ongoing, another five weeks, a few more commendations to give out and a few events to attend, but thank you all very much indeed for coming this evening. And it's been, and it still is, until the 15th, about 10 past seven on the 15th of May. Absolute, yes, and kind of you are. Absolute pleasure to be mayor of such a fantastic town with such a fantastic community. Thank you.
Right, back to the day job. Questions and comments from public and councillors. I don't think we have any tabled questions that were submitted, no. Do we have any questions from members of the public or councillors? Should we move on? Okay, excellent, thank you all very much. Now we come to item five, which are the lightning talks. Laura has a list. I think we're going to call, I think most people are here. They've registered that they're actually in the room. What we're going to do is ask you to come up. And the microphone that you see at the lectern is on and you may have seen that I was holding it very close. I was taught that by Josh Hampson from Music Department at Froome College. Actually, just rest it on your chin because otherwise you tend to get that in and out. And I have an assistant, the one I mentioned earlier, Hi Lisa, who will at 2:30 hold up 30 seconds and at 3 minutes precisely will hold up times up and at 3 minutes 15 seconds, the large gentleman in the rugby shirt will escort you from the lectern. No, we would like you, please, to try and keep to that, to the three minutes. You know, three minutes 10 seconds max, then we will ask you to stop. But we are looking forward to hear what your big ideas are. Okay, if we're all ready. Yep, I think I'll do it on the order that's here. James and Amy, Dogs for Health. No. Not here. Okay, I thought we had. That was short. Okay. Right, we'll move on. In case they turn up, then we can assign them at the end, but we'll move on. Izzy Tucker, please, do we have Izzy Tucker? Safe cycle storage.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you very much for listening to me spouting on about a very selfish thing, actually. Basically, I'm a bit of a cyclist, not a very, you know, I don't cycle miles and miles, but I cycle around Froome and I have an e-bike. And I would really like the opportunity to be able to cycle into Froome and leave my bike safely somewhere. But the reason, I just feel very uncomfortable back just tying it up at the, you know, various points in the main part of the town. And I was just thinking, it'd be really nice, and it does happen in other places, where you could maybe rent or sign up for a year to actually borrow a space, i.e. maybe a cage of some kind, that you can maybe sign up on an app and book your spaces. You might have, I don't know, 50 hours per year or something. But I just feel that we're lacking this. And if we're trying to encourage people to cycle more, I think that would certainly help me to feel safe about bringing my bike into Froome. You know, I don't have to cycle very far, but you know, it'd be nicer than, at the moment, I walk in. I do play tennis, so I can leave it actually within the tennis courts when I'm playing tennis. But I don't know whether it's something that we could perhaps work with local businesses that might be able to do some sponsoring or we could raise the money in other ways to actually obtain these cages that I'm thinking of. And it might be a combination lock that opens, a bit like the tennis courts really, where you can, you know, sign in at the allocated time that you've got. So that's basically my idea, so thank you.
Thank you very much. We're not going to take questions from the floor and what have you as we are doing very well on time. The idea is that you will leave your contact details on the board or comments on the board and actually you will have an opportunity to talk to Izzy and the other presenters afterwards. That's part of this evening. You can enjoy the food and wine and come back in here and grill them on their big idea. That'd be great. Councillors too, as well, will be, I'm sure, wanting to talk to you. Okay, our next big idea is Alex Sams. Hi, Alex.
Hello, everyone. Oh, I'll do it on my chin. So a great plan about the cycling and safe cycling, I think that's great. So I'm here today to talk about the Froome Wild Way, which is my big idea for Froome and also the surrounding parishes. What exactly is that? Well, it's an enormous area of land that I would like to see turned over to a wild land that has a really long shared use path all the way around it, all the way around the outside of Froome. And also has paths that connect to the other residential areas. So I'm not sure if any of you have ever tried to cycle around the outside of Froome or even walked around the outside of Froome, but it's actually quite difficult. But yeah, that's my big idea, that's the basis. So that shows you kind of the idea of what it is. I want to thank the Froome Nature Photography Group for all of the photos that are actually up there. But yeah, very big, 1,500 hectares plus and as wide as possible to provide a realistically functioning corridor for ecology and biodiversity. And yeah, connecting up other nearby biodiversity sites that are of great importance, including European status and international status sites. So what is that going to be? Well, it's a place for people to experience nature first and foremost. As I said, a shared use path accessible for disabled people as well and a place to experience natural landscapes, wildlife and soundscapes as well. So why do we need this? Well, if you have a look back in time, you'll see how much Froome has developed over the last 100 years, say, for example. So what do you want Froome to look like in 100 years? What do you want the surrounding residential areas to look like? I think the current prospect is that no one can say for certain, but there's a very good chance that most of it is going to be developed into housing or industrial or commercial. Why don't we instead have a real wild area surrounding us to separate out those developments and use that area to actually facilitate development rather than block it? So... Oh, didn't seem to work. Yeah, so why is it important? Well, massive climate and biodiversity resilience gains. So looking at the regeneration of habitats across those areas, especially low productivity arable land where there's not much money being able to be made from the land, those kind of areas are really good. Oh, I've got 30 seconds left, so other things I'm going to rush through. So water, getting better quality, better quantity of water in the land, slowing the flow. Who's going to pay for this? Well, there's a number of different avenues we can do and I think in the past this is a pipe dream, but at the moment it might actually be possible and I think we really need to consider this as a reality. And if not Froome, where else in the country is going to do that? I think it has to be us and I think we should be the first. And if anybody wants to contact me, you've got a couple of QR codes there, you can scan and get in touch.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you, Alex, I like the way you put your foot down in that final bend. Thank you very much. Our fourth big idea, please, James Hall. Hello, James, hi.
Froome's getting big. I don't know, 28,000, is it now? It's going to get to 40,000, I think, by 2050, the way it's going. So I think we need upgrades in facilities. There was research this afternoon, I went to Froome Railway Station. It's a quirky wooden grade-two listed building, which is well worth keeping, I think. But if you look at it now, weeds overgrown along the track. It's a single track, the other line's been removed. The other line's been removed. The other platform is derelict, defunct. Perhaps the worst thing about it is the locked toilets. Unless you go early in the morning, you're not going to go there. You get a sign saying, go to the booking office for key, but usually the booking office is closed by eleven, twelve. When I went there this afternoon, all six stalls were locked there. It's sort of a very unwelcoming first site for people who come to Frum for the first time from the railway station. Look outside, you've got ugly commercial and retail units. And it's a fifteen minutes walk to the town centre. Taxi, maybe? The station is in the wrong place. It's not in the centre of town nor on the far edge of town. I suggest that we dismantle the wooden building. To me, it looks relatively easy, I don't know. Rebuild it on the main line. Or if deemed not good enough to go on the main line, I suggest putting another station behind the cheese and grain. There's a raised level there, so it's not too difficult to get to. Good for shoppers. The station would be two and a half minutes walk to the Westway Shopping Precinct. Once on the main line, Frum to London Paddington, at a push, one and a quarter hours. Taunton, only thirty minutes. How long does it take you by car? Ages, over an hour, I should think. And also, the early services to Taunton from Frum are terrible. You could go to Bath, Bristol and Bridgewater. The others will take you to Westbury, which means you go to Westbury and then come back down to Frum. So in thirty minutes, you're roughly where you started. How good would it be to hear the station master say, platform one, the fast train to London Paddington, calling at Reading and Paddington. Two, for the fast train to Taunton Exeter. Platform three for Westbury, Bath, Bristol line. Platform four, Weymouth. Second train, first platform is for Frum Town Centre and Redstock. Second train, platform two, Shipton Mallett. Shipton Mallett, you've virtually got a train line there. It's five hundred metres away. So in theory, you could go from Frum to Shipton Mallett. I suggest that steam line is done all the way to Frum and also commercial line. Redstock, join up with Redstock as well, the line's almost there. Of course, the thing is, who's going to pay? Which I think this is so important, I should get an extra few minutes, or three minutes from the other people.
You'll all have an opportunity to find out who's going to pay later. Thank you, James. Next, we have Fern, Fern Alder. Oh, it's online, okay, thank you very much.
I'm not sure if this is working. Okay, good, good. Well, my idea is a mini idea, really, not a big one. But there was one day, on a very hot summer's day, where I was in the market, somebody'd set up a stall offering water, and there was a big queue, and everybody was very, very pleased to see it. I'm quite grown up, and I remember the days when we used to have water fountains around town and at school, and I just thought it would be really nice. It's a very important thing for human beings to have one or two water fountains in town for people to drink. We have really hot summers these days, and it would be a great thing. I've since discovered that a lot of the restaurants, cafes in town offer free drinking water, although I've never noticed the sign that says that. Perhaps the signs could be made bigger if drinking fountains are an expensive, difficult thing to establish, but anyway, that's my mini big idea. And I personally would appreciate having drinking water available.
Great. Thank you very much, Fern, I think we all drink to that. That's a great presentation. Okay, our sixth and final big idea, I think again he's on Zoom, and this is John Scott. Hi, John.
Good evening, hi. Yeah, it's a very small big idea. So I guess to introduce myself, I've been in Frum since 1996. I've not been here that whole time, but I've certainly, the origin of this was listening to the exceptional Mayday Saxon Vale presentation. In that time, I've seen so many ideas for the not site, and I'm just so impressed. It's world beating, it's incredible, and it's something that I want to do everything I possibly can to support. Now, before I came here to Frum this most recent time, I found myself in the cat house in Church Street, just a few yards away from the site. And I asked myself, what could I do? And I'd also been thinking about this before, and some wonderful bits of serendipity have occurred. So what I was hoping was, we have many churches in Frum, but many people now express their spirituality through, you know, a diverse range of sort of esoteric meditation. And I hoped that it might be possible to establish here on the edge of that site. I've had a lot of experience with protests and direct action, where I've led meditations as a way of bringing peace and unity and harmony. And I know that the history of the site has much division, and there was a time, maybe a few years ago, when it was quite diverse. And I just think it's such a beautiful idea, and I wanted to establish a regular space here at the cat house, at the bottom of the church steps, and invite people to sit for unity and community and togetherness, and to envision the beautiful dream that could be realised here. That was my small big idea. Thank you.
Thank you, John. So just to remind you all again, notice boards outside, and this also, to highlight this to Fern and to John, who are, who joined us via Zoom this evening, that people can leave contact details and we can pass those on to have further discussions and explore your big ideas. Thank you all very much for presenting and putting your ideas to us. We now have a video, and this video is a compilation celebrating FTC grant recipients in 2023, 2024. And I'm sure that you will appreciate, as already know, a lot of what's going on in Frum and how we at Frum Town Council have tried our best to support these groups. Thank you. Just an amazing array there of organisations that we've helped in some way. Just before we come on to the Civic Awards, I'd just like to say some very quick thank yous. First of all, thank you to Miles. They've done an absolutely fantastic job in curating that video. I couldn't read his writing, I thought, what's curating? I thought he said editing. But to Miles and the fantastic job that they've done. Can I also take the opportunity to thank Sarah, I think may have left, Becca and Laura for helping out this evening, and also all the work that goes behind setting this up. Lucy at the back there, who is just my absolute star. You're looking at a dyslexic mayor who doesn't really like writing very much, and that column every week goes past Lucy first, and she does her magic on it, and it's absolutely brilliant. So thank you very much. Thank you, Paul, for this evening, and all the support that you've given me over the time. And the team, the staff here at Frum Town Council for putting this evening on, all the fantastic work they do through the year, and my fellow colleagues and councillors and friends, who I consider friends, for all the support and all the work that you do during the year as well. So, thank you. Right. The Civic Awards. It's an absolute honour and privilege to be told that towards the view, I was going to say rain, I don't mean that. It's the Italian in me, I can't get the Roman effect out of it. Towards the end, someone did call me, actually, in the very first few days of becoming mayor. They said, what do we call you? Your mayorship, your lordship, my liege? And I actually said, my liege would be great. Go forward and do whatever, you know, my liege. But that I would get to choose the Civic Awards at the end of the year. Now, you can imagine from what we've seen this evening, what a tough job that is. It's an absolute pleasure to be able to do it, but what a tough job. But I know that past mayors have done it, and they've given Civic Awards, and mayors coming will give Civic Awards, and hopefully those people will be recognised. And the one thing I forgot to say earlier on is the privilege of actually wearing this is, I keep telling people, I'm just a custodian, I'm passing through. The next one, the next mayor will have this. And you have to know things like, how heavy is it? That's the most asked question. How heavy is it? You have to know that, Andy, and other things about it. But it is an absolute privilege to be able to do that. Okay, so the first Civic Award this evening goes to the volunteers of Discover Frum. You can applaud anytime you like, it's okay. And this really is to recognise their commitment and incredible dedication to Frum and the way that they welcome people and visitors to Frum. We want Frum to be a warm, welcoming place, and we want that for everybody, whether they are, as we've mentioned earlier on, people in a plight, people who are fleeing conflict, whether they're people who just come to the town for an afternoon. And to have those people there behind that desk and serving the community in the way that they do, I thought was just amazing. So I think we have, is it Irene and Jane, who will come and receive the award on behalf of all the other volunteers? And James, is it? Yes, please, yes, come along, come on, please. Jane just said to me there, would I thank Favberg? Excellent segue, thank you very much. The next Civic Award goes to Peter Travis. Peter is co-chair of Somerset Bus Partnership and also part of Frum and Villages Bus Users Group, Favberg, that Jane just mentioned, and they work very closely with Discover Frum. So it wasn't an accident that we had one and then the other. But really, it's to recognise Peter's commitment to Frum. He actually lives in Rhode. But, but his commitment is absolutely flawless. He works with a lot of people across the whole of Somerset, and I hope he has a particular interest in Frum and has helped me and helped us a lot at the council in trying to secure bus routes and bus services and some new ones, and hopefully some great news in the future that we're working on together. So I'm very happy to present Peter the Civic Award. Philip wasn't going to allow me to have the microphone. Just wanted to say that Philip's been one of the bus champions. We have 150 bus champions right across Somerset. He has not only been a brilliant mayor, he has been the most brilliant bus champion too. Thank you. What time does the D2X go past? It counts at the moment, I don't think it can. Yeah, five past nine, thank you, Jane. Okay, the third award this evening, we've already mentioned them a few times from some of the slides that I showed you. And it is, like all of these, are a real pleasure to award a Civic Award for their dedication and their incredible commitment for welcoming so many families and individuals to our town, families and individuals who find themselves in extreme difficult circumstances. And the Civic Award goes to Frum Welcomes Refugees. Have you got that signed, Lisa? I'll hold the flowers for you.
You can hold the flowers, well done, well done.
You can hold flowers, well done, well done. I just wanted to take this opportunity to recognise a lot of other people in Froome who've taken part in welcoming displaced people to Froome to seek refuge. So for example, and this is Froome at its best, I think. For example, Claire and Peter here who set up alongside Luke Wilde and his company 2050, the original organisation, two years ago when people from Ukraine started to arrive in the town and there was no real infrastructure at all. And the three of them put together a fantastic support organisation. Also, there are lots of other people who've helped support earlier arrivals from Syria, Afghanistan and Iraq. And this goes back something like 10 years, I think I'm right in saying. So there's an awful lot of people there who have helped. Lots of other people have helped in the last couple of years to help the Ukrainians find access to employment, to healthcare, to schools and so on. And to those people who were hosted refugees in their homes and some of them are still doing this two years later, that is just a wonderful thing that they have done. All those interpreters who've helped us, all those people who've helped refugees learn English and all those organisations like Schools, Caris, the charity in Somerset that helps support the refugee hub here, Fair Froome, Rotary, the Town Council, Cheese and Grain and of course the Refugee Hub itself. And very importantly and lastly, to the people of Froome who have so generously donated to the fund that the Town Council and Rotary set up and that we're still able to use to support refugees with small grants and to make their life better in Froome. So thank you to Froome, well done. Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Peter and Claire and all of those mentioned. Justin, your flowers. I thought I might take them, I went to Karen, never mind. Thank you, Nick. Okay, and the next Civic Award, I have to say I was surprised that this person hadn't received one, not through any fault of anyone, just because of the amazing work that she has done and does. And this is really to recognise all the amazing and incredible things that Alison Murdoch does in our town and also the co-founder and leading on The Good Heart. The Good Heart is such a support for a lot of people and it is something that has become an integral part of Froome and a support structure within Froome. And I hope that you were able to join in and visit and take part in many of the kindness festival events that went on all week and got to see Ken Loach. So for all the amazing things that you do and in the nicest possible way, don't stop. I know how tiring it is. Next Civic Award is Alison Murdoch.
We all know that one person can't do anything. So this is just my opportunity to say thank you to my amazing team at The Good Heart, all the people who volunteered and helped and the kindness festival just now. We've had hundreds of volunteers, haven't we, Susie? I mean, just almost beyond count and amazing support from everybody at Froom Town Council and particularly this year's mayor, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Alison. Now, I could say that this person is behind you and you would probably say, oh, no, he isn't, he's at the front. When I was thinking about the Civic Awards, I actually thought, this person really has to be recognised and it really is my privilege and pleasure to actually do that. For no other reason than actually he was the estate agent that sold us our first house when we moved to Froome. And then when he came to sell it, he did actually say to my wife Karen, I wasn't there at the time, but he did actually say to my wife Karen, he said, do you know what? I'm really happy that you're putting this house on the market. Said, why is that? He said, because it will be the first house that I'm marketing for just over £50,000. I'll just repeat that, a house, three bedrooms in Froome on Stonebridge, £50,000. That's how I got to know Humphrey Barnes and then sort of met him here and met him there and we sort of look each other and he would look at me and think, do I know you? Yes, I think I know you, yes, I sort of know you. And quite recently, I've become reacquainted with Humphrey through Rotary and some other events. And when I saw various things on the TV around Christmas time, I thought, this, you know, not quite, you know, the end of your career as it were, but actually a milestone, a huge, huge milestone. And this, Humphrey, is to recognise your commitment to the Memorial Theatre and all you've done in terms of supporting the Memorial Theatre and also the amazing charity work that you've done through Rotary. I had the pleasure of attending a dinner and talking to Mike, the president of Rotary, about various people in the room that I knew and, you know, the things that he was saying about you, Humphrey, were terrible. He was speaking your praises very, very highly and about how much you've had a commitment to Rotary and how much you've actually done. When I actually said that I was going to award Humphrey Barnes a Civic Award, what none of us knew was that today is a very special day for Chil and Humphrey. So it's a very special for me to give you this award on your 63rd wedding anniversary.
Thank you, Philip, Mr Mayor, what an honour. I was born in Froome, down in the Butts, in 1937, so you can work that out, 86 years ago. And I've often been asked over the years, perhaps why I've never perhaps stood to perhaps be a councillor here in Froome. But I think that building over the road has really got in the way of me doing that. I first walked on stage over there with the Operatic Society in 1951 as a 14-year-old boy walk-on-part and up to about, well, I was on stage this Christmas, wasn't I? Some of you may have seen it. But actually, in a show about three years ago, Chitty Chitty Bang Bang, so I've been there a long, long time. And during that time, there was talk of the Memorial Theatre, the Memorial Hall, Grand Cinema, whatever you may like to call it, was going to be pulled down sadly because the only people that was really using it was the Froome Operatic Society and the local carnival used to use it on one or two days a year. This was after the Grand Cinema had closed. And of course, had that hall gone, the Operatic Society would not have had a home to work in other than the Merlin, which is an ideal theatre, but it's half the size of the memorial. And so also, the other underlying fact was that that hall was built in memory of the fallen of the First World War and to pull it down would have been an absolute disaster. And so we, the Operatic Society and other major organisations in the town got together and we managed to save it. I won't go into the details of all of that, otherwise we would be here all evening. But suffice to say that this year in September will be 100 years of the Froome Memorial Theatre that was built in memory of the fallen of the First World War. All the money to build that building came from Froome District people. It was built by local builders, so it is a building that we just had to keep going in the town. It's used very, very regularly now, we have three or four shows a month and the assembly rooms to the rear of the theatre is used every day of the week. It's quite a wonderful story. So on behalf of everybody that works at the theatre with me, I'm a trustee over there now, we have a new chairman of the trustees, I stood down a couple of years ago, but I'm still very active as I can be anyhow. But Philip, Mayor, thank you all so very much for this lovely award and I think probably it will go up in the Memorial Theatre foyer. Thank you all once again.
Thank you, all recipients. It just leaves me to bring this meeting to a close. Thank you all very much for attending. Thank you all very much for participating. I was going to say thank you for your questions, but missed that bit out. Please stay, enjoy the drink, enjoy the focaccia, enjoy the agrostini, enjoy the amaretti, enjoy the biscotti and enjoy the conversation and the company. I'm going to have a drink now. Thank you all very much and I draw the meeting to a close, enjoy the rest of the evening. Thank you.